Please stand for the pledged leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will call a meeting. To order those present the barrel Baker County clerk, Charles Vance, President, Phoebe Harless, Commissioner, K.K. Matthews, Commissioner, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of Lincoln County Commission meeting that is held on February 1st, 2018 at 6:00.
I'll say aye.
All fair to say aye. Okay, on the public comment, first we have Larry Stutler, Lincoln EDA.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, I'm here tonight to briefly share with you the reaction of Lincoln Economic Development Authority to recent events at the Rock Creek Development Site, which is a lot of us know as Hobet. If you recall, one time, former Governor Tomlin had a grand plan for development in that area, and that has been changed considerably. As we stand here now, it's probably reduced to, well, it is, to basically a National Guard Training Facility, period. So, in regards to that, we wrote a letter from the Lincoln Economic Development Authority, and I just wanted to share this with you all tonight, so you'll be aware of our position. And I think, following me, Rick Ryan is on my board, and he'll be sharing some more details. This letter was addressed to Governor Justice, also to Commerce Secretary Thrasher, to Speaker Armstead, and Senate President Carmichael. We sent one to each one. The Lincoln Economic Development Authority is in strong disagreement with recent decisions aggregating the Rock Creek Development Project. The action taken in December 2017 to vacate the original plan of a 2.6-mile, four-lane access highway diminished the anticipated economic impact significantly. Executive Order Number 5-18, February 7th, 2018, essentially gutted the project. What was to be the largest mixed-use development project in West Virginia history is now a little more than a military training ground. We support our military, but the focus here should be economic development, and we challenge you to produce substantive case studies proving that this type of facility generates economic activity even remotely, consistent with original projections. Equally disturbing is the complete absence of communication and collaboration by current administration officials with Lincoln County. A large portion of the site lies within the legal borders of Lincoln, yet every action was learned second and third-hand. We deserve better. What had been communicated, what has been communicated clearly and repeatedly, is our need for sites to diversify our economy and to think big. Contrast that with stripping the biggest site in the history of West Virginia of already designated resources and turning it over to an entity of singular purpose dependent on a politically-controlled budget. It is common knowledge that problems plaguing the coal industry in recent years have left county, municipal, and family budgets strained to the point of breaking. The Rock Creek Development Project was an opportunity to revitalize, diversify, and grow the economy in our county, region, and state. We are appalled at the deliberate and insensitive manner with which this entire project has been scrapped. We are devastated that the destruction of hopes, dreams, jobs, families, and futures of so many is the consequence. That's the letter, and I have a copy for you. Like I said, Rick will be speaking more to this in just a little bit. Also, I want to give you, since I'm here, we, if you recall, we did a comprehensive plan last year, and I don't think I've ever did, you all have copies, so I brought one for each of you commissioners, if you will. There's a copy of the latest, Mr. President, and our comprehensive plan for each of you. Within that, there's items in here we're already working on, so thank you all for your time.
Thank you, there. Rick Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, I want to talk to you also about the Rock Creek Development. This goes back to Governor Tomlin, that set all this in motion and thought he had it pretty well sewed up to where it would work. I also, we got, well, both of us sat on the Quarter G Development Authority also, and we was coming up with a video put together to shop this out to potential people that was interested in coming onto this property. Well, Thrasher Engineering was sending an engineer to our Quarter G meeting, sitting in a meeting with us. So, I set it up with the people at ERP, which was the old Hobet job, so we could get on the property. Thrasher sent some of his engineers with a drone, and the college had a drone, and we went up and filmed video where the road was going to come in and videoed the property that would be available for development. And we made the video, and right in front of it had Thrasher Engineering and all this stuff. Well, next thing we know, the engineer quit coming to our meeting. Shortly after that, we started getting little tidbits of it was going to be scrapped. In the meantime, this map surfaced. This was hand-delivered to IMCA, showing all the property that had been given away to the National Guard. Everything in green, see, let me get it adjusted right, everything in green was given away. That's the whole job. The only thing that was left, this is where the belt line went around the mountain, this is the prep plant area. All this property, Lincoln County, this little bit of blue is where they're working at now, and when they're finished with it, it'll also go turn green. So, this property was given away, they didn't come to Lincoln County and ask y'all how y'all felt about it, they didn't go to Boone County or Logan and ask nobody about this, because Thrasher was even in on helping us make videos to shop this property to people. Then, this was hand-delivered to IMCA, the head guy, Terry Price, over IMCA, wanted to know why this was a carrier for General Hoyt. Brought this map to give to him, he said, "Why did you deliver this map instead of ERP?" He said, "Because the general told me to deliver it." And that's only, and the reason they've given this to IMCA, to show IMCA they have no control over this property now, because it'd been given to the government or give to the National Guard. And they was trying to tell IMCA, "Well, you can't go out here and inspect nothing." But there's a few hiccups in that part of it, too, because of the dragline situation. But all this property was given away, the rug pulled right out for miners, they had a bond that had already been sold, they had the money, a bid had been worked up, the job had already been bided out and give to the company that was going to do this work. All that, that company had spent, probably hard to tell, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars working up a bid. Well, this got jerked out for minder, and nobody seems to know none about it. We had a meeting within the Governor's Office in Southern West Virginia, Dave, and I asked him about the map, and he acted like he didn't have no idea about the map. You know, I don't know whether he was putting on a good show or whether he actually didn't know. But I think, what I'm asking, if y'all can write a letter also to go along with the Quarter G Development Authority and the EDAs, Boone County Commission is supposed to also send a letter, the Quarter G, and like I said, the EDAs are supposed to, and we're trying to get a meeting where we can sit down with the Governor and Thrasher and look us in the face and tell us why they done this. They let that bond go back, and that's, we talked to bond lawyers, it's been going for 28, 30 years, said they've never seen it, or heard of it, or seen it before, that they would turn a bond back in that way. It's like fifty-four million dollars they just give back. But they're still talking about going to what we call the Chicken Barn, right below Hobet, building a bridge across, going up the mountain and coming through into Hobet. So, we don't know where that money's coming from, the bond money that was voted in here recently for roads or what. You know, and I, I'm, just to be frank with you, I'm pissed off over this. I'm pissed off, we got the lowest amount of money to fix our roads in Lincoln County. This was one chance we had at maybe getting some development in Lincoln County. Armstrong down here had done, worked up a plan, they was going to run high-speed internet to the backside of Hobet, so it would be ready for people to come in there. All this stuff's been scrapped, and I'd just like to have a meeting with them, so I could look them in the face and tell them we're pissed off. And excuse my language, but that's just the way I feel about it. I'm tired of getting brushed off to the side on this stuff. And I don't know if you can do it tonight, or whatever, but if I gotta come back to the next meeting to get a letter wrote and sent in with the letters we're already doing, but it would be appreciated. Thank you.
I just think, I mean, I think we are all supporting your view on this, okay? I just think we're just putting it on the agenda for our next time, so we can do this, okay?
Okay.
But I do think it's important, just like you say, that we get this in, get this in, and get a meeting with the Governor, find out, you know, who's benefiting from it, if we're not benefiting from it.
Well, I'm getting tired of asking one of them, they act like they don't know, and you go to the national, and they don't know either. I'd like to get them in the same room, you know, so they're either going to tell us why they done it, what's behind it. ERP's tickled death now, because they're, they will no longer be liable for anything that happens on this property. You know, it takes the liability out of their hands, they're tickled to death, it's saving them, you know, millions of dollars. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ron, did you want to, Mr. Polly, do you want to speak on the same thing?
That and the immunity, sir.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and get the next one in line, then I'll get you, okay? Paul Davis?
Well, I just wanted to take an opportunity here, I hope I have a nice opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Paul Davis, I'm running for Congress, and I just wanted to take a minute to just introduce who I am and where I come from, and maybe get a chance to maybe meet some folks here. I'm from Huntington, I've been born and raised there. All my mother's side of the family is from Lincoln County, so if you're a Linnville, Porter, Isaac, or a Browning, you're probably related to me somehow down the chain, somewhere down the line. Been married thirty-five years to my wife Sandy. We have two boys, they're grown, one is the band director at Wayne High School, and so, and the other one's an accountant at one of the banks there in Huntington. I am your working candidate. I come from a working-class family. My great-grandfather was a miner, he was killed in the mines in Fayette County. My grandfather on my father's side was a boiler maker, and my father was a machinist at Sino Railroad. So, the unions over the years have provided a lot for me and my family, and I'm very appreciative, so I know what it's like. And if it wasn't for that group of folks at the railroad, we wouldn't, they'd put the food on our tables, and I understand how that works. So, I just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself, I'm going to hang around for a while if anybody wants to get to know me a little bit better, but I'm like, Rick here, I am pissed off, I mean, just to be honest with you. We in Southern West Virginia get the short end of the stick almost every time it comes down the road. I lived on Route 10 outside of Huntington. How long have we been hearing that there was going to be a road built through Lincoln County into Logan? It never happened. All roads ended up in Charleston. And now we're seeing this, this project here being pulled away from us again. We gotta get folks back in there that are going to fight for us, and they're going to fight for the working-class people, and Charleston and at DC. So, I hope you'll take an opportunity to look at what we passed out tonight, and please call me if you would like to learn more about who I am, and I appreciate your support when it comes to May 8.
Thank you. Mr. Polly?
Mr. President, Commissioners, I'll talk a little bit about what Rick was talking about, about the development. Phase two of that development, which they hadn't talked about, was to bring the fourth of their highway from the airport reserve, Hobet, on down towards North River Lake. God knows we need some kind of access to that lake, there's all kinds of development down around that lake if we had a good access to it. Not only that, everybody knows coal seamers taxes dried up, we've got a little bit back, but it's pretty well not enough to help us anymore. That's the only big advantage our county could have, is that, that's like, we need to, anybody here knows we need that money back, for investment. We've got sheriff, sheriff's apartments, low on funds, all the offices in this courthouse is just working on shoestring. And I think we've been done wrong on this, this project. Right now, they're still going to build a bridge right below Hobet, thirty-five point six million is the bid on it, and the road going back to, which is really in the head of Big Horn Street coming down Hobet, thirty more million for a road, so we're looking at sixty-five points and change for a road they're going to build in there. That's going to be for the National Guard, it looks like it's going to be a private road. But how can, I don't think we can stand by and let them use taxpayer bond money and build a private road on a private coal company's property and give it to the National Guard when it benefits nobody. Not one drop of it, money will come out of this. And it don't matter what side they're going to tell you, if Michelons come in there, do a tar study, that's about four guys come in there, look at tar, see how they work. The layers, they're going to put a test site in there for the buggies they built, National Guard, that's three or four factory reps come in there, see how these machines operate under conditions. But as far as helping Boone or Lincoln County, it's not going to do squat for them. So, I think we all get behind this and push this issue. Governor, if that's up to the plate, or if we need to do something about it. And the other thing I want to say was, I'd like to thank Commissioners for the helping us with the Corcoran Community Center. I think the report was sent to you from the board here, and you'll notice in the report, they've got a couple contributions, and got some things in the work, I think they're doing a pretty good job there, and it's really helped them out. I think we've got things set on the right, right post there. And we've got other things we need to check on, I think, that really saved them, just like I say, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to discussion of concern possible actions. Region Two drawdown?
Hi, I'm Lisa Wells with Region Two. I know you're normally used to seeing Steve Frye. He's still with our agency, but he's moved into a different capacity, so I will now be your contact on the lower mud Phase One water project. Good news, construction is getting ready to start on this project finally, beginning this month. We had our wage rate meetings with the contractors last week, and everything is moving ahead, which is why I'm here for a drawdown. Basically, it's time to pay a little bit of bills. One of the contractors, Chinaki Construction, did submit a bill, and is primarily for materials, for sixty-six thousand eight hundred and eleven fifty. Now, this particular invoice will be split between two of the funding sources for the project, one of it was the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which is taking the bulk of this particular invoice of forty-eight thousand four twenty-four ninety-two. And that was, the Lincoln County PSD has that particular funding source, and I was at their meeting last week, and they okayed that portion of the payment. So, and this particular drawdown is the small cities block grant portion, or the community development block grant, they're trying to get us to use that term for the grant at this point, it's going to be a hard transition for me, though. The community development block grant balance, which is what is part of this particular drawdown tonight, is eighteen thousand three eighty-six fifty-eight. And also, in addition to that particular invoice, we have three invoices from Region Two, in the amount of two thousand six eighty-one oh five. So, the total drawdown request for the community development block grant funds that I have before you tonight is twenty-one thousand sixty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. I have the information here, and if you would like to move to pay this, I can get you to sign these, and if we can move on with that. Are there any questions?
What's the number of the drawdown required?
This is drawdown number seven, I apologize.
All right, we heard Region Two's presentation, I know she should go ahead and accept the drawdown request, just present it.
Oh, no.
That's it.
Here, I have some documents here.
Aren't these water projects, isn't typical that the money that comes from, I know the block right in the water, but the Army Corps of Engineer money, does that typically go to the PSDs?
That's a very good question. I'm not sure how that goes, I think it's just basically how the funding stream, how the engineer puts it together, those types of things. I would have to specifically find that, I'm not sure if there's a precedent set that it goes to the PSDs, so I would have to get back with you on that, if you don't mind. I don't think that there is, but I don't want to mislead you either, so I would better confirm that, because I don't think, I think the core money can go to multiple types of agencies, but again, I would like to confirm, I know we've had issues in the past with that money.
That's what I was going to say, we like to watch those type things, because of problems we've had before, little million-dollar problems, and that's why we, I'm sure that's why you received the question, we need to know the answer to that, because you're in a situation that matters.
Okay, I will, how about if I can get you an answer, and I can email, I'll email that response to Mary tomorrow. And also, I can also break, give you the breakdown of, I can follow up with some more documentation, for that core side of things. But on the first page, I need the President's signature, if you guys have blue ink, that's wonderful.
Can we send you a copy of that?
I will email you that as well tomorrow, and I need everybody else's signature on the resolutions. Yeah, I'll get a response for you, and I'll send it with the copy of the executed documents.
She gets your copies in these days.
And included in that copy, I'll also put in the core portion of the draw, so you can kind of see how it matched the force calculations on breaking out, basically the twenty-five percent match, is what the small, the community development block grant funds are for that particular grant. So, get the answer, and I'll give that information. Are there any other questions? All right, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, Gary Linnville, Sheriff. Yeah.
We had, we moved a little bit of money around from the processor in my budget side for, and hoping to get a couple deputy hires in, and I submitted a couple names there to you. Well, actually, I submitted three, but we had to pull one out at the last minute, so, but he failed his background, so. But the two that I have in there, I think I give you all information, work history and all that stuff on there. So, basically, I'm just submitting that and trying to get two employees or two deputies hired in. God knows we did it.
So, as far as the other backgrounds, when you check those, are they okay?
Yeah, the others, everything turned out good on all the backgrounds, except the third name that I drew out wrote the last, it didn't come back good. And I didn't, also, in these hires, too, I want to mention this, that we haven't done a psych evaluation on any of them, so that may be something that you won't pretend to, if we do hire, the psych evaluation needs to be passed, because they're like six hundred dollars a piece, so I didn't schedule any of that until I talked with you all, and see what you wanted to do on that, that part of it. So, that's basically my understanding, and, you know, in the code, that's about all we have left, that and the, you know, lie detector, just polygraph. But that's not a problem, I've got a guy in Cabot County that'll come down and give that polygraph for nothing.
Without naming names, could you tell us how they failed the test? I know you submitted names before you said.
Oh, how they got canceled out? They had a suspended driver's license, so, and then that's, yeah.
So, what you're wanting us to do is go ahead and approve, and then you will follow up with what?
If, if they pass the rest of their test. Time frame, we didn't have, you know, if you approve me to hire the two, or two positions, then I can send them to do the polygraph and psych evaluation and all that stuff, but I didn't do that, I didn't want to have to do a bunch of psych evaluations and all that, have all that extra money, you know, so I'm kind of trying to pinpoint it down to the two that I've got on the test. Well, I had pinpointed the three, but obviously, the third one has been withdrawn, but, so, that's kind of a little rare. Just trying to save a little bit of extra money, because those things are pricey, six hundred dollars a piece for a psych evaluation, that's pretty high. So naturally, you don't want to send, you know, three candidates up there, and then you don't get to hire them, and then you're out. Eighteen hundred dollars, so.
When do we do our budget? When we leave the sheriff.
Tuesday.
It's kind of Tuesday. She's notified you that.
Yeah, Mary and I talked today, we got, I got a letter memo and everything on that.
At least ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, Tuesday morning.
I appreciate it, Sheriff, thank you.
Okay.
Just in talking with, I probably spend more time on the budget a little bit maybe than the other commissioners have, and, you know, there's going to be, when we meet Tuesday with the various offices, there's, we've got some really hard decisions to make, and just, just a matter of information for the commission on the due date there. So, is, you have the letter from the sheriff before you, is there a motion to hire?
I'll make a motion to hire Jared Martin.
I'll say.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other motion to hire? If there's no motion to hire, we'll go ahead on to unfinished business, possible action. On the motion to hire Mr. Martin, that's pending with psychological evaluations presented by the Sheriff's Office, so you have your thoughts on that. Glenn Turley's request from the Corcoran Community Center, Glenn?
I want to thank the Commissioners again for the opportunity to come here and represent the Corcoran Community Center. You gave us a donation for the bills that were due for December and January, which was very, very graciously appreciated, it really was. It helped get us through a hard spot, helped us keep the center open, as a matter of fact. We're trying to keep it from ever going in debt, so that money really come in, and we were able to do that. Since that time, we've been able to talk with Mr. Barkin, we've got the election set up, the early voting, and the actual primary there are set up already, we've already signed it, and he's got his rooms. We've got the internet coming, we're going to try to have it done by the first of April. I told you, it would probably add about twenty dollars to it. It looks like possibly we can get a plan if we sign for it for a year, for nineteen ninety-five a month on top of our phone bill. Our phone bill now is right around sixty dollars. So, that's what we're planning on doing, and that will take care of that, and it would allow the election to go on, just like we would hope that it would. You mentioned we should bring back the bills for February, and if you'll notice, we gave you a report on page three, if you've got it. She's got it written down, what it is for March, what is due. And again, the gas bill was the worst one, it's four hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-six cents. She's also got the electricity, it's a hundred and sixty dollars. Garbage went up just a little bit, a few pennies again this month, it went to fifty dollars and thirteen cents. We just got the water bill today, it's right around thirty-five dollars. And also, again, I said the telephone is around sixty. So, what she added up here was just for the bills that are actually shown on it, but again, it's right around six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eight cents. We hate to come back and ask the Commissioners if we realize that we're all kind of pinching pennies and trying to survive, but the help you gave us, and if we could possibly get any more, would allow us to take some of the monies that we've had donated. The building needs work. The building needs painted inside, it hasn't been done for years and years. We did manage to get the gymnasium last spring, which if you've been there and visited, you know that it really looks so much better where it's been cleaned up. Us taking care of the building just makes the building more valuable to the county of Lincoln, and that's what we're trying to do, so I'd like to be able to, if we do the work ourselves, I'd like to be able to add some paint inside, just to make it look a little bit better. So, the reason we're coming tonight, and you said to bring these back to you, is if we could get a little more on that, just maybe even the gas bill this time, that would free up just a little bit of money.
I received a check yesterday, so I couldn't put it on the agenda, from Mahew Construction, has made a contribution of five hundred dollars, but two fifty of it is for the community centers, and then two fifty is for future self-help water projects. So, I want to give this to the commission on their behalf and thank them for it. So, this was, we sent out the letters, we told you, but you documented, I think, the last time.
Yeah, we talked about sending letters to the community corporate partners and asking for donations either. Didn't the community centers order self-help water projects, and we at least got this from us, so that's good. And I see we've got Mr. Jackson in here, too, so I'm hoping he got one of those letters still to decide. But, you know, well, so basically, what you're saying, you need another six eighty-two, is that right?
That would really help us, so we'd maybe free up just a few dollars, so we could buy just some paint and do a little bit of odds and ends to the building. We've been very fortunate. We've been very fortunate, we actually took in, I think, a little over seven hundred dollars in donations since the last time we met here. We had Hazel construction company again step up and give us a big donation, so I want to thank them publicly, they've really been very good about helping us. They're also the company that gave us the air pump for our sewer system, so they really, really stepped up and helped us there. And then we've got another donator that, she likes to kind of donate on the QT, so, but she has given us quite a bit of money also to help us. So we're very fortunate on that, we've got people that want to help and that want to see the center stay open, so. And we want to take good care of it for everybody in Lincoln County. It's the community center, and it's very important, it serves a purpose. We just see people in there in desperate need, I'll be honest with you. There are always going to be people that come that just use you, but there are people there that really, really need our help. You would be surprised what comes through the doors. The other day, I believe it was last Thursday, I believe, we had probably fifty, sixty-some people come to us and signed the book. Today, we had, I believe, thirty-some. So you'd be surprised what you see, and we're doing a good work there in the community, and I'd like to continue to be able to do that work, and desperate greatly helpers. As far as I...
I'll move to give the Corcoran Community Center six hundred and eighty-two dollars and that cents.
For a second?
Six eighty-two.
Six eighty-two oh eight.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I see, we'll get you your six eighty-two plus a hundred and twenty-five of that, right? Is that what it is?
Well, I don't, do you want to, part of me feels like we should put that in the account or start, and...
Okay, and these accounts we're making for this is, well, let's go by how we're going to handle these type, because I think it's worked, I think we talked last time about, we would want to help when we had to, you know, pretty much, I mean, when we're needed, if you're doing the right things, getting the donations, everything you're doing is right, and what we hope to do is establish an account, and you could know what's in that account at any time that the corporate and the corporate might need, and then, when you need something, bring it to us, and we would, you know, hopefully, we'd see the same precedent, I mean, the same priority as what you do with it, and they'd just go ahead and give you that amount from this account. And I'm hoping that the letter we sent out will generate us more money for these type things, and all we would be, we would be there, that allows to have a failsafe, in case you guys run low on money, we'd get, like next winter's, when, you know, we think about it again, you know, and hopefully, by that time, we would have a significant amount of money to help you through that and things, so. If I, and I kind of agree, I agree with Commissioner Harless, in some cases, we'll put this in account, that amount of money will be designated for the Corcoran Center, and then, like, as you go through different things, if you find something that you want the commission to act on, then bring it to us, and then we'll review it, look how much money we've got, and decide how much we can give you on that. If that's, I mean, I think that's why the, in the long run, that helps you, because I think this, this account will continue to pass all of us eventually, hopefully. It may not be, we don't have an obligated fund for money for that, but as we get monies, we can put it in that, and I'm hoping that our corporate community partners would help us with those, and that way, they can be recognized for what they do for the people of the Corcoran Community Center and the Hart Center, and the water projects too, because they do a lot other than just hire people that work here, and this would help, I think, us help them too, tax-wise and things, because we need help, as you know, and it's the people in Hart's know, and if we had the money, we'd do it without asking, but we've come to the point that we have to ask, and hopefully, we'll get some response that will help us in that. But are you all agreeable with that? Does that sound all right to you guys? So we'll do that, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank you commissioners, I think that's a wise idea, we talked about the last meeting there a little bit, this will give you something to fall back on if emergency does arise for one of those things, like I said, not guaranteed by anybody, it's some money, oh, you can get, and I think it was a wise decision, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And we thank you for, and I'd like to make a public invite, we're going to try sometime in the middle of April to have a meet and greet for people that are running for candidates, county commission or whatever office it might be, we're going to make it open, so they can kind of come there and we can meet with them, and they can discuss their views and whatnot, so we'll announce the date, and we want to invite you back once too.
Thank you, sir. Okay, if you all have had time to review the new business as presented, is there anything we need to change on this, or am I in, or...
Look.
Okay, if not, I ask for a motion to approve the new business as presented.
Soon.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll go into open discussion, Commissioner Matthews?
Just happy to announce that we've signed a lease agreement, started signing a lease agreement with a team of ours for our towers. Team of us started coming into the county, and they've made a commitment to Lincoln County, and this is just one minute. Appreciate Doc signing that before we leave.
Right.
That's it.
Commissioner Harless?
No.
I wanted to tell everyone, Mr. Baker, our county clerk, received another grant for records preservation for the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. We appreciate you working to do that for us, and...
Yeah, and that's the project y'all also contributed to a couple months ago, with the seven eight thousand dollars for the new server for the courthouse, the window server, so that's really about a twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollar project, and it's going to be a big deal, I mean, the new system that we're going to get in the clerk's office now, we'll file the indexing that we have, paper records that we have, we'll file all that back together, and if we have digital images, we'll tie those with the indexing, it's going to be good, we go back to, in our indexing, right now, to two thousand and two, or we go back to about, nineteen, three, eight, I believe, eight, three now, on the computer, so.
And I did, Commissioner Matthews and myself went over and looked at the election center, it's almost completed, once we get it completed, we'll open it up, let people see what we've done, but it's, it's a very much, it's going to make a process of, that Mr. Baker's made fairly simple ideas, but we have a much better fiscal plan to work here with these elections and storm machines, and ensure the security of the area and things like that, so, and they're just within a day of being finished with that, so.
Well, we're getting in the outdoors with double...
Oh, yeah, it's just so much better than blocking, we don't have to worry about the snow blowing in while...
Doc, I said I didn't have anything, but we may want to make mention, it's under a new business, that March fourth, at, or March fourteenth, I'm sorry, at six P M., there'll be a public meeting to, I think, would you like to address that to update the flood plan?
Yes, Commissioner, it's for the letter map revision, for three map panels that basically tie in Upper Mud River Road with Route Three, Straight Fork, to move the regulated floodway. Basically, it's going to open up the, as you're heading back to West Hamlin, it's going to open up the whole right-hand side of the new Hamlin area for future development and such, it's taking it out of floodway, putting it back into a flood zone that can be built in, and houses can be referred and things of that nature. The other side, the intent of that was, the reason that happened was because of the church that's going to go in there behind McDonald's. The church hired the test engineering to do all the work, to acquire a, quite a big sum of money to do the engineering, so they can put the church in there behind the McDonald's and the Dollar General. So, because of that action, it opened up that whole side of New Hamlin. And if I could make a correction, that public meeting now is the thirteenth, the seventh fourteenth. It's in the newspaper notification that was in the new business, it was changed yesterday, so I think Mary got that updated.
Yeah, I probably already had, I got the updated one, but I have the agenda.
Okay.
So we can make that.
If you have any questions, I do have maps, anybody who'll stay around and look at them, I've got some maps and how that's going to...
Let me just ask you, we said several years ago, we had problems with flooding, we were behind there and things. Is this addressed at in any way, or not?
You mean where the church is going to go?
No, no, I'm talking about on the right-hand side, where people are having trouble with flooding issues, I don't, maybe that's cured, because I haven't heard anything about it lately.
Well, the areas that are closer to Straight Fork, to Lynn Avenue, are still in flood zones, but they're not in floodway. In a floodway, the requirement was you had to have hydraulic and hydrologic studies done, and the starting number on that was about eight or nine thousand dollars just to get one done for even a small piece of property, for a house. What it's done now is taken the floodway and taken it across the road toward the high school, so all that area off to the right we're talking about now are in A or AE zones, which all you have to do is now is just basically have elevation certificates and figure out how high out of the flood zone you have to be, so. It does free up a lot of area for, where, for instance, the Petrie Oil Field lot down there, there've been several people asked about buying that, and they asked what they could do with it, and then my answer was, it's doing what it can do, it's a parking lot. But now that the floodway's out there, that property now is opened up for development.
And I'm glad to see this has been done, I think it's a shame that the church has absorbed the cost of doing it, I think the FEMA, the Army Corps of Engineers, somebody should have updated those maps, and, I mean, but, anyway, it's done, I guess.
Well, hopefully, I mean, and Mr. Jackson and I talked briefly a little earlier, you know, FEMA's answer to that was, it's going to try to get it in the budget, and if they got it in the budget, it'd be three to five years to get Lincoln County updated. I haven't gotten an update on whether, how much of that has made the budget, and how much is going to pass on it, especially with these continuing resolutions going on at the federal level, but...
It just hasn't been updated for us, I don't know, but I don't know how it's even...
Well, actually, those maps reflect pre-Mud River Dam flood plan.
I mean, I don't know how you enforce that really, because there's so, you know...
Well, wait, you know, in the next three to five years, we'll try to get that changed, so, thank you. On a lighter note, we have begun, Commissioner Matthews has already talked to one of the landowners below Mud River Dam, because those that don't know, we're trying to get D N R to stop trout below into the tailwaters of Mud River Dam, and they, and the director of the D N R said he would do it if we could get the people involved to sign off on easelts as far as public stream access and things of that nature. We have the contact information on those individuals, on those people that own that land up there, and I have KK's already talked to, and I have, I talked with delegate Eldridge last night, and the process should, I was hoping we could have it done so we could stock this spring, but I think that's, because they have to do parking areas and things like that, we have to get the D N R to talk to the landowners about limiting liability and things like that, because they provide liability insurance for the landowners, and also try to identify areas we can belt parking areas for stream access and things of that nature. But this is going on, we're farther along than we've ever been, and, you know, the stream quality's already checked and things, so it is favorable for the trout to be stopped there. And we're looking at it at two miles from the dam tailwaters itself, two miles downstream. And we do, like I say, we have identified the landowners and the contact information, and we're starting right now, so hopefully, all of us old guys, for next, next spring, have a place to trout fish in Lincoln County. We're the only county in southern West Virginia that doesn't have one of these, and we, I pay for a trout stamp, and I know a lot of other people do too, and I hate to go to Wayne County or Barbersville or somewhere to fish, so, but it looks like this may be a work plan, if we can get the landowners to sign off on it, things of that nature. I have a couple other people that live up there that are talking to the landowners too, trying to, and this would be a great move, not only for the fishing up there, but for what businesses are up there, you know, you have the camping area up there, and you also have another area, another business below it, and I'm sure, once we get this done, it's going to, it's going to really help us grow in that area. We don't, seeing as we don't have the home outside to work with, we're going to work with what we can. But I will make comment as far as what was brought up by Mr. Stutler, Mr. Pauling, and Mr. Ryan. To me, you know, and I was, Dr. McClellan delivered me, so I've been around here a long time, and we've always, not only got the short end of the stick, we got the muddy end of the stick, and this is one of the muddiest sticks I've ever seen us get, and we need to make sure that we get questions answered, we get questions as to why we were left out, why we weren't consulted, because we all, those of us that's dealt with politics before, and state politics and federal politics, know things aren't done, just be done, they're done for a reason, there's somebody that's profiting from this, and I think we need to ferret that out to see what the problem is, because we don't, we don't have a lot of places like that to develop, I don't think anywhere in southern West Virginia does any, and we especially need this. I mean, we, you know, we're underwater in a lot of things in this county, and the only way you can get out in the water is to build a dam, and if we're not going to be, if we're told we were going to build that dam for you, and then we don't get it done, then it puts us in a really bad place, and so we fully support the letter that Mr. Stutler is sending to them, and we would ask any, anybody in the county that wanted to comment on it, they can send their comments to the, I think the governor ought to receive the comments, and then, when this meeting's set up, you know, we will, we will there in force and be able to nicely ask what happened, and hopefully, there'll be a sensible answer to it, although I don't see one that has anything I could agree with, with it, you know, if we're not going to cause economic growth in Lincoln County, I need to know why, you know, we were sold a bill of goods, you know, they went ahead and had all these monies out for us, you know, and then you change one or two individuals, and they can stop a project that helps, you know, however many people we have in this county and surrounding areas, so, it's, you know, we may not be able to do anything about it, but at least they're going to know when they do Lincoln County the way they done, we'll take a, take a little lesson from our teachers, and we need to bring injustice to light, and that's what I think this was, this was an injustice for our county. But anyway, I totally, we totally support the E D A and what they're doing, and the Corps of G Development Authority, because without you guys, we don't have anyone to run the court for us. And sometimes when you're, when you're out in a battle and things like that, you need not only the point people, but you need other people, and that's where I expect people in Lincoln County to come forth and say, look, this wasn't right, you know, and like I say, we may or may not benefit from it, but I can tell you this, any of those that benefit from this move, they won't be supported by Lincoln County anymore. If we don't get support for our county, we won't support them, and that's just, that's the way it has to be. I mean, you know, and it's not that, it wasn't our decision to be this way, they made the decision, we have to react to that decision, do what we think's best for this county. Anything else? All right, no, did you hear that?
I just want to mention the meeting on April fifth, we're, I feel like we're going to have a special meeting beforehand, do you want to...
Are we talking about the...
To approve the budget, why don't have something, but I just don't know what day it's, right?
Okay, we can just, we can, you know, yeah, we won't know, because we won't know when we're finished with that, so we really couldn't do that.
We've got to have it to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Well, the commission will, we usually meet once a month on regular meetings, but we have a budget this month, and what Commissioner Harless brought up is that we have to approve that budget before a particular time, before our next meeting, so we will be having a special session just to do that, when we determine that, we'll be able to notify the public and post it as a meeting. Anyone else?
Yep.
All right, I ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting until April fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at six o'clock.
Oh, man.
So, we stand adjourned, thank you all, appreciate it.